This is Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 11th meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of the African American Male. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Good afternoon. I would like to call to order this meeting for the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. If I could get everybody to stand for the pledge, please. Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider Republic, the which is and one nation under God. Okay, then I would like to do the roll call, if we could. Commissioner Moore, Say Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Benning?
Present.
Commissioner Fly is not here. Commissioner Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Pastor Williams?
Present.
Got you. Commissioner Millsap? See. Commissioner Connolly?
Present.
Commissioner McCormick? Don't leave his on. Pastor Carroll? He's not either. Dr. McCollum? And Councilwoman Tillman?
Present.
I saw him. Thank you.
No, I got it, brother. Thank you, man. Scoot my target in this area.
You're okay, man. You're okay.
Detours in the roads is extraneous. With a car, it's easy to live in.
Understand.
With a scooter, you gotta go four blocks back and...
We complete the same one.
You did it. Amazing. Am I really late?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We see Mr. Millsap on.
It's your Mr. Hope.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to read the mission statement, if I could. The mission of the Indiana Commission on the Social Status of Black Males is to study the social conditions of the state's black male population, develop strategies to remedy or assist in remedying serious adversities, and make recommendations to improve the educational, social, economic, employment, and other circumstances for Hoosiers. Commission serves policymakers and public interest groups as well as the media, community organizations, and members of the general public. And then, I want to approve the April meeting minutes.
I'd like to add that Commissioner Linda Connolly was present at that meeting, if I recall. However, she was not listed as present on the, as far as the committee, I mean, the commissioners present, and also throughout the meeting where she did, where she did vote on the roll call. I'm sorry.
The Connolly. I will talk, I will get with Commissioner Williams and try to sort that out. Thank you.
Other than that, I make a motion to accept the April minutes.
That's taken.
Do we have to do a roll call for that? Can we just?
You can do, you can do a roll call, or you can do all in favor.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Excuse me, I have one more.
I was gonna say, just for, just so we won't have to recall, oh, actually, do you think we should, which of those are corrected, or we cool to say we're gonna correct it? You know, like with...
No, I understand. That's actually a very good point. We can do that.
Either or is fine, but you know, we want, before we approve, we make sure they were corrected and minutes officially, but if we can feel like we would do it, I'm fine with...
We'll do approval with corrections?
Yeah.
That's what we've recommended?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Okay, I motion that we approve the minutes, like, takes you say.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Benning. I apologize.
That's fine.
Commissioner Benning, I second this.
All in favor of approving with correction minutes?
Aye.
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 All right, approved. The treasurer's, treasurer's report.
Yes, I submitted the treasurer's report for April. I did email it out to all of the commissioners. There are no changes.
Would motion to approve the treasurer's report?
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report. It was received by email.
I second that. All in favor of approving the treasurer's report?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Treasurer's report is approved. We don't have technically any new business this week for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to spend a little bit more time talking about the subcommittee assignments. It seems like several of the subcommittees did get a chance to meet. I also would like to spend a little bit of time on the commissioner roundtable as well. Though we don't have quite as many commissioners as we typically do, we'll make do what we have. Unless somebody has new business they want to introduce, which is fine.
Chair Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman? I noticed that it wasn't added when it is open, if anyone had any topics or things to be discussed. And I know there's been approximately three meetings where there was conversations, but due to your absence or absent other members not being in attendance in regards to the bylaws. And I don't know if you had that opportunity. I sent you and the secretary an email just to let you know, as I voiced it before, that I did take the approved bylaws that the commission approved and provided it to the council attorney, Attorney Dua Harris, who is now amending the bylaws. Before I present it to the council, I will provide it to each commissioner to review, to make sure that if there's anything that was overlooked, amended, or needs to be added, we can do that before I present it to the council for approval. Also, there are still two seats open. The mayor still needs to appoint someone for the justice, and the council needs to rename or decide on a new organization to take over or to fill the minority health coalition that resigned from participations with the social status.
Actually, on my, thank you, Commissioner Tillman. It's actually on my list because we don't have anybody currently for the, for the health subcommittee while we were waiting for that position to be filled. Is it possible that you and I could talk offline just about that procedure for filling those positions?
Yes, that's fine.
I will, if you don't mind, I'll call you after this meeting?
Okay.
If you have a few minutes.
Sure.
Not to intercede, didn't we all agree that we were broadening that spectrum of that subcommittee? That it wouldn't be just limited to the health that we, so we can have one or other people that can probably meet the standards of that subcommittee? I think we did that, was that...
It wasn't, well, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fly, it wasn't voted on originally. We were gonna vote, but it was withdrawn and again, due to that consensus was, due to that the chair was not present, and they were requesting that the chair would be in attendance for this to be a top of discussion. And that's why I'm re-presenting it again, so that we can get this finalized.
Okay, I get you. You weren't here, we kinda was trying to get an agreement with broadening the actual just health, so that way we can be able to have a more participant, be able to be able to be in...
Completely agree, particularly since minority health has declined to continue with the commission, so we may have to find another group, which would by necessity require us to kind of expand, because it may not be a healthcare agency, you know, in the same vein, so, okay. I'm sorry? I think it has to be an agency, an organization, Councilwoman Tillman, if I'm correct?
That is correct, but if, for whatever reason, the commissioner, if the board would like to remove that as being a health, but, and go with some, a different organization, that is durable as well, but that would be, that would have to be something voted upon. But if we do not have anything that entails and related into health, because that's a broad spectrum. There, there's many organizations or entities that's out there that could utilize as far as with mental health, things of that nature. We would just have to reach out to one of those organizations to see if they are willing to, or wanting to participate. But if not, you have the option to, if you want to just go with a whole new, different organization.
Something that we can vote on, but I, you know, at some point, but I personally think that we should try as much as possible to keep health as a topic and find an organization that can support that. Like you said, health is a very broad spectrum, but it's also an incredible, incredibly important one to our community, and I would hate to see us lose that type of resource. So perhaps you and I and Secretary Williams can get together and try to find some, one that can fill that void for us. And if anybody has any suggestions at all, or knows an organization that would be willing to, obviously, we are, we are open to any of your suggestions, too.
Hi, Commissioner Lee. According to Section 2.4, 5.7 of the legislative statute, it says, under eight appointment, under Section B, 5B, it says that eight appointments shall be made by the common council on a yearly basis and shall be members or participating in from the following groups. And, and Section 2 of that says one from the minority health partners. And so, it's not really an, an option under our statute to have any one other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And that, that is, is that Ms. Connolly? Commissioner Connolly? I can't see who's speaking. What's that being, I can't see.
My name is Belinda Lee, Commissioner Belinda Lee.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Lee, that, you're absolutely correct. However, the bylaws or the ordinances be the liaison for the council, that can, those can be amended, but we will have to get an agreement or vote from the board first, and then it will be presented to the commit, to the council, city council, for the change, and we can make that change. There has been amendments currently done where I passed the ordinance from where we went 215 members, so it can, it can definitely be changed, if that's what the commissioners agree upon.
This is Commissioner Hogan. Since they said that they are not, since they're not willing to participate, I would imagine we would have to find the organization first and then present the change? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Anybody else have anything as far as new business they want to discuss?
This is Commissioner Williams. Can you all hear me?
Yes, of course.
Okay. I, I do think that is a good idea, I mean, because with health being a broad spectrum, I do think it would be a good ideal for us to look for an entity that could fill that, even an entity like mental health, that's something that I would think could fit in that position. Just a suggestion.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Yeah, obviously, that is certainly a need in the community as well, and it certainly would have some interesting meetings. But thank you, of course.
Commissioner Lee, once again, so part of that same statute that I read earlier, it says that one needs to be from this one center, so that covers mental health, so just saying.
All right, if there's nothing else, we will move on to old business. Commissioner Williams, did you get the meeting, the minutes for March, is what I meant to ask? I'm so sorry, I probably should have emailed you first, but do you have the meeting minutes for March?
There is a minute meeting. They were taking, Ms. Clark, she took those meeting, I do have a copy of those.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure that they're in existence, and then I will...
Yes.
You could please...
Yes, the only, the only minutes that was not taken was in April.
Okay.
Not April, I'm sorry, in March, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. When I chaired the meeting, that was the meeting that the minutes wasn't taken, so that was...
Ah, I see. Okay, thank you. And then, setting up the admin accounts for the Facebook group, sir, if you're still in, but I can just, you know, I can send you the, whatever the admin things is necessary for that, since we've already agreed that you and Mr. McCormick and myself would be the admins for that group.
Excuse me, Commissioner Benning here. I think Commissioner Millsap also volunteered for that.
That's correct.
We don't want to leave him off. I think he would provide a lot of wealth of knowledge to participate on being an admin for that.
Of course he would. Thank you. In my notes here.
Yes, that is included in the minutes that Commissioner Millsap also volunteered to be on that committee.
Does anyone have any old business they want to discuss before we move on to the subcommittee reports?
Yes, I just want to bring up something that was brought up at the last meeting. It was a recommendation or suggestion by Commissioner Fly, or I'm sorry, Commissioner McCormick, as far as possibly the idea of getting together and taking a picture as a group to put on our Facebook page.
Yes, I, I think that's a wonderful idea. I think it would make the page a little less generic, you know, for lack of a better term, if we did have all the commissioners available, for one. Everybody's spread out this meeting, obviously, but maybe we can push for next meeting, if possible, for us to attend here in person, depending on, you know, whatever factors in your life and whatever external factors, but if we can, all plan to be here for next meeting, so that we can take a good picture to Commissioner Benning's and Mr. McCormick's, Commissioner McCormick's recommendation.
I just wanted to bring it up so that it didn't fall between the cracks.
Be forgotten, no, thank you.
Good idea.
It's a very good idea. Anyone else have any old business they want to discuss before we move on to the subcommittee reports? Okay, education. Dr. McCollum? I saw him, I'm sorry, thank you. I thought I saw his name pop up there.
No.
Dr. McCollum did submit his report by email to everyone. I hope everybody has a copy and has seen that. We don't have anybody for health. If you would mind writing your emails down underneath that one, or the other commissioner that has not gotten anything. Employment, Commissioner Millsap? I don't think it's on. Commissioner Millsap and Commissioner McCormick and myself met up this month to discuss, thank you, various employment opportunities to talk about, attempting to get more African American males participating towards careers, get them the skill sets necessary to be successful at them as well, not just have the opportunities in front of them, but helping them develop the skill sets they need to, to be successful at these careers. We've talked about a number of options between the three of us. One of the big ones right now is that Commissioner Millsap has tasked me with helping put this class together for them, particularly for people who are entering into the workplace for the first time. I submitted something months ago, a PowerPoint, but that was set around trying to do these in one or two days, and we would like to see this done over two weeks, as far as this weekend, with two weeks worth of weekends, so significantly more. I have spent the last few weeks trying to expand on the program to add more content to it, to make it more focused on adults that are entering into the workplace, and I will submit that to all of you guys as soon as it's finished. That is everything we have right now, at least as far as the employment commission goes.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I was quite disappointed last month in that they had outreach for county jobs over in La Porte. I know people went from the juvenile service center, and there were nine tables in two days, I think at some point, nobody showed up, not, not just our community, I mean, anybody. So, it just struck me as, as being a disaster.
Tariff.
So I think, um, gentleman like Commissioner Fly, and other people who have direct inroads into the community, and you within that base being them, I'd be more than willing to volunteer anytime you would need help, encourage people to get out to the job fairs, get out to those activities that do, make a presentation and offer the positions. Because I had two ladies who went there, supervisors from juvenile service center, they talked to us all. Nope, I don't know where, I don't know whether you'd get money, because COVID is gone, but people just did not show up.
One of the things we discussed was, I think that there's not enough emphasis put on how much a career provides security and stability in your life, as far as long term, do you know what I'm saying? Long term planning, you know, I'll have this for this year, and I'll have it next year, and I'll have it the year after that, you know what I'm saying? A plan long term.
I fully agree with that, but people gotta eat every day, so they have to start someplace.
We just have to try to figure out a way to get them interested in thinking like that, that...
I know organizations like that, grassroots organizations...
Right, right.
Can push, you know, push that fuck home, that point home, and we just, I know you out there doing it, but you know?
Yeah, yeah, personally, I, I didn't even know about it. Myself personally, maybe that got a lot to do with it, too.
Yeah, and, and... And I agree with Commissioner Cox. I think that even though it was advertised, those county jobs were advertised via text or emails throughout the county, and we kind of shared those with other individuals throughout the county, I think Mr. McCormick shares it on a regular basis from someone in personnel, he shares it on his page. I think the, the way that it's getting out there is very limited. I think, like you said, Mr. Fly, that you, Commissioner Fly, you didn't, you weren't aware of it, and I think many other individuals aren't aware of it, because it's not really put out there, it's not really advertised. So I think some of these agencies, such as NAACP and other agencies, that people are involved in, really need to push it. If you have another platform that you could advertise it, I think that we really need to utilize that, because there are a lot of jobs out there, but we know after COVID, for some reason, I think when the government gave those monies out there, it did something to hinder people from wanting to go back to employment. So I think that we need to find different avenues on getting that information out there, because there are a lot of jobs out there. Everywhere we go, we see hiring, hiring, hiring. So those jobs, that job fair was an opportunity for people to gain employment, and I know that there's one upcoming, I think at the Blue Chip. I heard it, Ms. Tillman may be able to elaborate a little bit more on that, but I know that Councilwoman Nelson Deitch had stated something about an upcoming job fair, I think, at Blue Chip. So we need to really find a way to get that information out there, because there are jobs out there. Now, whether people want to work or not, and how they're going to maintain their livelihood, you know, that's up to them, but we gotta do our part if we're aware of it, and, and just people that need, you know, jobs, we can share that with them.
Agreed.
Actually, you brought the flyer last week, last meeting.
I couldn't recall.
She had the last meeting and passed it out.
All right.
I'm gonna add to the... I'm sorry. No, please, go ahead. I'm gonna add to the agenda, especially for the employment subcommittees, that if there's any job fairs, that'll be a good opportunity, at least for us to put it out there during the meetings. So in between months, if there's anything comes up, we can just at least have something, squeeze it in somewhere, you know what I'm saying? Okay, okay, brilliant. But anybody else have anything they would like to add on employment before we move forward? Thank you, Commissioner Benning and Commissioner Cox. Thank you both. All right, criminal justice?
Yes, I did submit April criminal justice report. Members, Chair Rodney McCormick, myself as co-chair, members Kenny Fly, Commissioner Kenny Fly, Commissioner Tony Cox. We did not have an actual meeting, just wanted to give you an update that we're still trying to secure a meeting place and time. I did send out a separate email to Commissioner Cox and Commissioner Fly, I'm not sure. You didn't? Okay. I'm sending it to the same email address that Commissioner... Did you get the agenda sent by Chair Hogan? Because that's the email that I'm copying it from. So I'll make sure that I get from, get with you to get the specifics, so I'll make sure that I have that, and I'll resend it to you. Did you get it, Ms. Commissioner Fly? Commissioner Fly, did you get it?
Yes, I received it. Yes, ma'am.
So, so that we can set up our next subcommittee meeting. And then, just an updated reminder, we do have our juvenile symposium coming up next Friday, May the 20th, at Purdue University Northwest. The last day to register is this Friday, May the 13th. Registration starts at 8:00, there's, the program starts at 8:30. There is breakfast and lunch that are typically provided, so that's the information for you.
I would just like to add, Stacy, that the Michigan City Public Library now have like four rooms, and it's first come, first served, but you don't have to reserve them, but it's first come, first served, and they can seat about four to six people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, social factors, I don't think you have anybody representing the social factors here this week, at least, and I, I did not, certainly didn't get an email.
There's more, aren't you on it?
I'm supposed to be on it, but I don't know who else is on it, so I haven't scheduled any meetings.
Commissioner Williams is on it also.
It's the two of us, okay.
I am.
So then I'll give...
I'm on it.
Yes, Commissioner Lee.
Then we'll get together after this meeting and set up a time to meet.
And again, these meetings, particularly now, with the nature of how things are, they do not have to be in person. If you guys feel more comfortable meeting by Zoom, you certainly, Zoom, you certainly can. When you guys establish that social factors meeting, is it possible for me to get included on that as well? I'd like to show up for that meeting, too, if we can.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee, I do have a question.
Please.
So, I was assigned to this commission to fill the spot that was vacated by Lester Norville, and so I'm interested in knowing what committees that he set on? An opportunity for committee assignments.
At this point, any of the subcommittees, we'll talk after this is over, about what subcommittee you would like to be assigned to, and I will just assign you to that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering. Is there anything about the subcommittees you guys would like? Is there anything about the subcommittees you guys would like to discuss before we move on to the commissioner roundtable?
Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing going back to the criminal justice, um, juvenile symposium. Um, I s- do have some registration forms, um, if you're interested, if you might want to attend that uh symposium, awesome.
Thank you.
It is free, by the way.
Alright, we'll move forward to the commissioner roundtable. Uh, we would ask that you try to hold your comments down to two to three minutes if you can, uh, just so everybody can participate. I know that we are a little short as far as people this week, but we want to try to maintain uh that if it's possible. Does anybody want to contribute anything to the commissioner roundtable?
Chair, Chair Hogan?
Yes, Councilwoman Tillman.
I just have two things, um, one is if Commissioner McCollum can please. Send a letter to the clerk's office stating that he is renewing. As being a commissioner on behalf of the Michigan City Area Schools. They still have not obtained that in their office and they have to have that on file. And one other thing that, just from my observation, and that is. Moving forward, if everyone would please consider this and um. We can probably have it as a discussion at our next um commissioners meeting. And that is in order to move forward and productively, um. Even though we have members that may be absent, but always holding or moving forward on a vote. Or uh in making a decision, um, should be able to be resolved that day. Opposed, in opposed to always setting something out because you have a member, two members, three members that's missing. As long as we have a quorum, the meeting and voting should move forward. Unfortunately, if those individuals are not in attendance, they would not have the opportunity to vote. Um, but we have to consider whenever there's a discussion, uh, it would be great that we have everyone included. Um, but sometimes those decisions need to be made in order to move forward. So I just wanted to put that out there, thank you.
I am in agreement with Commissioner Tillman, I think um, that was, that was very well stated. Specifically because there are a lot of things that fall between the cracks and, you know. We need to, you know, go on business as usual, so thank you, Commissioner Tillman.
Commissioner Lee, please note according to state statute, a quorum is seven, so anytime there's seven members or more, the the vote can go.
I uh, I personally apologize for uh a lot of the agenda being passed on. I rely on. Some dissent and I rely on our conversations to be able to uh try to make the best decisions that we can. But to you guys' um point, uh, we have to start moving forward with the agenda, so going forward. As long as we have a quorum, we, you know, we'll make whatever vote we need to and just uh keep moving forward. So thank you guys and again, I I apologize.
All the work in progress, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone else have anything uh they would like to add to the roundtable? I would, I'm sorry, please.
Commissioner Lee, um, I'm interested in knowing what kind of um collaborations um we are reaching out to form. Um, throughout the city, the state and the county, according to our state statute, we need to form those coalitions. And we need to, they need to be measurable, um, with measurable, they need to be successful with measurable outcomes. And I'm interested in knowing currently what outreach is and collaborations we are working towards.
I know personally myself, I took part in the barber shop initiative last weekend. Uh, we were at Marvelous Cuts doing free healthcare screenings. Um, there were several health organizations, African American related health organizations there. Um, but mostly those type of assignments are typically pushed towards these subcommittees. But maybe we should come up with something formal that we can kind of put together so that we can have. As you said, more measurable goals or at least have a target that we're pushing towards, so.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Benny, if I might interject, um, because I think that, I I hear what you're saying. But that sounds like that can be a very broad, because we get hit things and and it's, it may be kind of hard to measure. Because it's so broad, but we have that social factor subcommittee on there, so I think in my opinion, that that will fall under that subcommittee. The collaboration part of it.
We, I I think that, I think that does fall within that social factors uh subcommittee. And uh, when it comes to collaborations, uh, I don't think that it's a um, a must that we initially. Force ourselves to collaborate, but if the opportunity presents itself where we can make good with collaborating. That'd be great and social factors, they can, you know, also reach back to us as a board and tell us like, well, this is out. Out there, is this possible, uh, this organization reaching out towards us, uh? Is there any way we can consider, you know, doing a coalition or whatever?
I mean, in theory, that's what's happening, we have um, the area schools, we have the NAACP. We have the Fly High Youth Organization, um, we have the uh, uh, uh. I'm so sorry, you guys. We have quite a few organizations uh that are are working together, you know, providing resources in order to make sure. Uh, so, and so, I guess in a way, we are currently collaborating with a bunch of different organizations. To represent the interest of the community, it's just not quite as formal, you know, uh, as it could be.
Commissioner Lee, according to our state statute, it has to be.
Williams, so am I hearing you say, you know, you all say that you would like with the social factors um subcommittee to. To um reach out for some collaborations and then bring them to the committee?
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Williams, I did not hear you, I don't think we can hear you.
Um, those uh collaboration and partnerships?
Commissioner Lee, you made reference something that's very important, it said measurable results.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you all.
I'm sorry.
We can't hear you either, uh, Commissioner Williams.
Oh, okay, this thing is down low, I'm not really on my computer, okay, can you all hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll shout a little louder, so my question was, are you um, are we saying that you would like the subcommittee, the social factors? Subcomit- um, committee to uh reach out for those collaborations and then bring them back to the commission?
I think Vice Chairman Fly used as example of what could be done. But Commissioner Lee made a statement or quoted uh our, our position as being. Having to provide measurable results. And so I think that makes it a pretty much a whole committee job. Not just.
But what I'm saying is, would you all, well, okay. What I was saying was, would you all like for us to reach out? Or is the whole committee gonna start doing that, reaching out to different um organizations to do some act of co- collaboration? Or do you just want a subcommittee to do that and then if there's suggestions? Then bring it to the social factors subcommittee and we can bring it to the committee?
If I may, I would like to suggest that every committee reach out. That way it's, it's gonna make it all inclusive. If social justice reaches out, if, well, you know, law enforcement, whatever, education, if they reach out. The organizations that they can work with and bring that information back, then we actually can measure some results. We'd actually have a barometer to go by, that's just my opinion though.
No, I, I, I share as far as all subcommittees should make it a goal to try to reach out to at least one group. That is uh, I don't know, parallel to that subcommittee, to your point, like education. You know, or the criminal justice, or just find some group that is willing to. Uh, even if it's just to attend the meetings, to attend a subcommittee meetings and have a discussion about. How we can put something together or find the kind of program that would benefit all of us, so I I I agree, I certainly do.
Uh, Commissioner Lee, once again, so part of the, the whole purpose of our commission is to ensure. That we are actually reaching um the goals that are set. And if we're not writing, so, so you went to the um. The cold, the Black Barbers Initiative, right? Um, those things are important, so we already are doing collaborations, but if we are not writing reports. Then we are not measuring our success and if we're not measuring our success, then we look like a failure. And we are doing a lot of wonderful things, do not misunderstand, this is my first meeting, I'm glad to be here. We are doing some beautiful things, I see all the things that are going on in the community throughout all of the subcommittees, I see them. However, if we are not reporting them. Because according to our state statute, an annual report should be in writing, summarizing the results of each. Of our duties and responsibilities and provide recommendations for improvement on what we're doing in this commission.
And and I, and I'm sorry, just to interject and piggyback on that, I know that in the first or second meeting, um. Directly or indirectly, I heard either Mr. Commissioner Fly or Mr. McCormick state that um. Those things need to be done because those things are actually supposed to be reported to the council on a yearly basis. So that concept was brought up initially at the beginning um of our meetings. So that's something should all, that should always be in the back of our minds, is that each subcommittee is supposed to have a report and then. Collaborate, you know, as a whole, um, it's supposed to be reported to the uh city council, the county council.
I- if I also may interject, Chair uh Chair Hogan, um.
Please.
As what Commissioner Benny stated, that is correct. And unfortunately, due to pra- uh past commissioners, um. And the dynamics that occurred, um, the reports were not done. For the, if I'm not mistaken, the past prior two years, um, they have been requested numerously. Um, that they be prepared and presented to the council by commissioners uh from the social status. Um, unfortunately, unfortunately, that fell short. Um, but moving forward, I believe um, there has been subcommittees that has been turning in um their minutes. From their subcommittees as well and that deadline for those reports um adds to. What each organization or subcommittees are doing, those have to be turned in um by March. Each year.
Okay.
I would like to also interject that um each subcommittee, all Commissioner Harry needs to do is write a report. About the Blackish, about the Black Barber Shop Initiative, so that we would have it on file as to what took place, what happened. Uh, whatever, and uh we would, then we would have that on file for uh as one of our events. And I wanted to back up to education, I forgot that in the education report, um. Cornell Branch received the scholarship, the BJ Ashley Scholarship for the Social Status Commission. That was in the report, so uh normally they uh, the committee sets up to have. The scholarship person come and attend usually our June meeting. And uh, we make the presentation to them at that time.
Thank you, I will get his information from either you or Dr. McCollum.
Actually, he sent it, um.
Okay.
Dr. McCollum sent it in the email.
So will ask me if he's willing to at least come to the next meeting or e- even virtually and just speak and then we'll present him, okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone else have anything for the commissioner roundtable this month? Okay, I.
I'm sorry, Chair Hogan?
Yeah, yes.
I I just wanted to throw something out there um to all of the commissioners. A thought, Father's Day is coming up. Would we like to consider possibly putting something together? For the community, uh, for fathers or something along that line? Um, I know our fundings are very minimal, um. Maybe a lunch or something or. Or depending on weather, I would prefer, I would recommend something indoors, not knowing how. Uh, we have our inclement weather to do something outdoors. But just something to acknowledge um the fathers or to, the fathers can bring their sons. Um, not negating their daughters, um, but we are the social status of African American males. Um, or just, just something to bring um the men, the fathers together. Um, during the month of sometime in June, it doesn't necessarily have to be on that Father's Day, but to acknowledge them.
Uh, not to, I mean, to interject with you also, um, Fly High Youth Services, we would be, we'd be doing a barbecue and uh. Three on three tournaments during Father's Day, but we would like to include the social status and have you guys be a part. And uh, maybe we can just do it together as a collaboration and uh we can, we can get it going on like that. That'd be another way of uh reaching out with people in the community and also collaborating and all of that things. And we can have social status real big and with participating and, you know, uh, the kids, the youth and the communities can start to see. Us more in a better light or a light in general.
Talk about direct uh access and I think that would be the opportunity to have.
Hands on.
Yeah, direct interaction.
We will. Whatever, and let's do it.
And Commissioner Fly, you already have that um scheduled, you already have that planning, that process? Okay, so you already have a foundation, so that kind of did all the hard work. Kind of collaborate with.
Guys up and say, come on, let's go with us then, you know, and whatever and suggestions, input or whatever else, where you can help. Social, you know, status help and we just do it together.
Do you have a date this year?
I'll get to you on all that dates and stuff, you know, I'll, I'll make sure I get all that together for everyone, but uh, yeah, I think that's cool.
I think that was a great idea, Commissioner Tillman.
Thank you.
Ms. Tillman, thank you, Commissioner. And it goes right along with this, well, Commissioner Lee was saying, collaborating and, you know, getting interested here. Yeah, uh, that big old smile, I see. Yeah, so that's cool.
Okay, so, so Commissioner Fly, will you be writing a report? For the collaboration?
Would I write a report about us collaborating?
Yes.
Yeah, I can write a report about us collaborating, I think the first most important thing is to, to get it going on, little more, get the action jumping. You know, uh, once we get the action jumping, our particip- patient in it and what we plan on being involved with and actually doing. That would be able to help constitute to even make a report, you know?
Because the reason I'm saying that, because we're talking, we didn't bring it back up, um. Um, Commissioner Holden didn't bring it back up as far as fundraising, but that was. Thing that we could have and use in bringing grants and getting some money into the social, um. Um, our African American social status, so we could have some more funds.
Right.
You know, so I think that would be good.
Oh yeah, that's cool and that's how we usually uh, well, Fly High Youth use this, uh, the community help donate and uh. Raise the money so far as like that, so we can do it collaboratively and uh get it, get it funded. And we usually just go through donations, no grants, just donations of the community because it's for the community. So you know, that's a way of them to be involved, you know, instead of just saying, here, come get it, you know, let's participate in your community that you want to help. You know, become a part of the process and that makes them feel more, more in tune with each other, you know, and knowing that they play a part in. You know, it makes them, they more happy.
I understand. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Tillman, uh, does anyone else have anything for the commissioners roundtable? Go ahead, go ahead.
I I wasn't gonna be. I I wasn't gonna be saying it like this, but uh uh I was uh. Trailblazer, man, NAACP Trailblazer Award, two thousand twenty-one, Kenny Fly. With me and everybody with me, and we had it going on, God bless America, thank you, NAACP.
Just want to formally congratulate Commissioner Fly and uh Fly High Youth and NAACP as well, well done and well deserved, man. Alright, I just want to thank all of the subcommittees uh for the additional work and the additional output. As far as meetings and reports and uh providing resources about what's upcoming in the community. I know we have a lot of work to do and I know that we're all growing and we're all learning, uh but I appreciate everybody's help and uh. I can't speak for everyone, but things feel a lot different than they did uh six or seven months ago. And I put almost all of that on you guys, so thank you.
You're welcome, brother, thank you too, man, for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, if uh no one else has anything, I would, I second that. So. All in favor of a German? Thank you.